No disparities in race, gender, and ethnicity. So just by the numbers, Kansas City, Kansas is the fifth largest district in the state of Kansas. We serve over 21,000 students. We have 10 preschools, 28 elementary schools, seven middle schools, five high schools, and five alternative programs. Fifty-six percent of our students are Hispanic, 24% are Black, 9% identify as white, and 7% Asian. Forty-four percent of our students are English language learners, and 72 languages are spoken in our district. The top five languages are Spanish, Karen, Burmese, Swahili, and Nepali. So when we think about the diversity of our district and how we're serving our students, it's our first and foremost, our goal is to make sure that we are providing real-world learning activities for our students to prepare them for what's next. And Kansas City, Kansas has had the unique opportunity, along with Piper and several other districts in the Kansas City metro area, to work with the Kaufman Foundation around some real-world learning initiatives. Kansas City, Kansas was ahead of that initiative because for those of you who have been familiar with Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools for the last several years, we implemented the Diploma Plus program in 2015. And last year, right after we were coming out of the pandemic, we had about 49% of our students to graduate with the Diploma Plus. And if you look in the annual report on page 11, it outlines what the areas of Diploma Plus are. And this year, our target goal was 55% in order for us to get to the 100%. And preliminary, we think we're closer to 60% or more. So we have great partnerships that allow us to do that, specifically with Kansas City, Kansas Community Colleges and several others. So I just, although that's not in my presentation, I did just want to highlight the collaborative nature and effort that we have amongst the district. We also have the unique opportunity to partner with Piper and Bonner and Special Education Co-op. So, and we also do lots of partnerships with Turner as well. So we, as an educational community, are collaborative and work together because we recognize the importance of public education and public colleges, in private colleges in the community, because that is what will allow our communities to thrive. Also, this year, our Kansas City, Kansas Schools Foundation for Excellent awarded 34 graduates from our schools with over $117,000 in scholarships. When we do our total, and we do it annually for scholarships across the district, we give, our students earn several million dollars in scholarships. But our students also perform in fine arts in the PowerPoint, and I apologize, it's not number. It outlines the number, how many students that received a one rating in a lot of areas, and that is the highest rating that you can receive. So we highlighted what our students received across all the areas, from state solo ensembles, piano solos, large groups in all of the different musical areas. But there's probably several of the students that are feeding into Kansas City, Kansas Community College and carrying those awards out. We also have lots of opportunities for our students in robotics and other areas. And I'm kind of jumping through this because I do want to be respectful of your time. But I also just want to highlight some of our community partnerships. When I came to the district last year, unfortunately, there was a tragedy that occurred when a student drowned. And since then, we have partnered with the YMCA in the Parks and Rec to implement a Learn to Swim program. And I will, and it's primarily at our elementary, but at the summertime, we also include our middle schools, and we are working to incorporate that into the high schools because we recognize those life skills for our students are highly important. And I don't know off the top of my head, but I know several hundreds of our elementary students have learned to swim since we have started that program. I will close with, we recognize that the social-emotional learning for our students are important. And in your presentation, you'll see highlighted how we address those needs. We have recently given a lot of investment in rolling out around restorative practices because we recognize the importance of teaching our students to restore and repair relationships while at the same time, you know, holding them accountable, but also preparing them for the real world to seek alternative options when trying to resolve conflict. I will stop, I was jumping back and forth. So I will, the last thing I do want to highlight is our BON program that actually was wrapping up last year. Forty-seven schools received safety and security enhancements. Two new elementary schools were built. High school, a high school and career academy spaces were developed. Our middle school career exploration spaces were renovated, and $301 million was pumped into the Kansas City, Kansas economy. And we created during that time 933 construction jobs. So those are just some of the highlights over the last year and some of the things that we have continued to invest in and will continue to build out within the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stubblefield. Appreciate the services of the Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools. And now, not last, but definitely a pillar for our educational system, and that's the Piper Schools District.
Hey, all right. That's a great way to get started. Well, good evening. My name is Jessica Dane, and I am the very proud superintendent of the Piper School District. For those of you that don't know about our size, we actually, the group here tonight are the smallest with about 2,800 students, but actually, we're the third fastest-growing school district in the state of Kansas. So right now, we are tracking anywhere between 7% and 10% growth every year. So it's a really exciting time to be a pirate. It can be difficult with school funding because typically, school funding runs a year behind the actual school year. And so those are some of the challenges that we have, but we are happy to have those challenges. We are happy that people want to come to school in Piper. So we currently have five buildings. We have an early childhood center. We have one pre, kindergarten through second grade building, one third through fifth grade building, one sixth through eighth grade building, and then our high school. And so tonight, what I wanted to do is take a little bit of time and share with you a really exciting year that we've had, a three-year buildup to this, what we call future-ready. And we are doing this K through, actually, early childhood through 12th grade, but we've had a really exciting year at the high school level. And so I wanted to just take a few minutes and walk you through that. So similar to Dr. Stubblefield, Piper is also in the Kaufman Foundation partnership. And part of that initiative talked about by the year 2030, that 100% of Piper graduates would have at least one market value asset. So you see those listed there for you, nine or more college hours, an entrepreneurial experience, a client-connected project, an industry-recognized credential, or an internship experience. And we were very excited to be a part of that. And so from there, we started thinking about, well, how are we hitting that mark? At the same time, the Kansas City Area Education Research Consortium asked young professionals who were out in the workforce, how prepared were they when they went to work, and what were those skills? And so you can see there in the pink, they named critical thinking, proactivity, communication, interpersonal skills, collaboration, and executive functioning. What you see in that purple column is how important they said those skills were to them when they went to work. What you see in the black is what they said, how they felt they were actually prepared. So there's a gap there. And so those were some of the things that went into our thinking. And so from there, right in the middle of COVID, we brought together our community. Many of you sitting around the table were a part of this work with us, but we went out to our community and said, as we think about a Piper graduate, what are those skills that we believe they need to have? And what can we ensure that no matter what path they're on, they're going to be proficient in these? And so I have those listed there for you, initiative and self-direction, social, global, and cross-cultural skills, creativity and innovation, communication, resilience and social-emotional well-being, and critical thinking and problem-solving. And then from there, we use that and said, hey, this is going to be our North Star. This is going to be the path that we take. So we put that right in the middle of our strategic plan, and we build our four pillars around that because we want to be sure that all of our systems are focused on this work. So we have there four goals of our strategic plan, future-ready, success for all, connected culture among all, fiscal responsibility and effective systems, human capital. And then at the bottom of that, you see our core values, inclusivity, innovation, community, integrity, and passion. So what I want to talk about tonight is how this works lines up with that first goal, a future-ready success, which is every student will be challenged and supported to achieve success by demonstrating core academic knowledge and transferable skills as outlined in the portrait of a graduate. So how do we prepare all of our students? Some fun facts that we talk about in Piper. Right now, 65% of the jobs that our kindergarten students will have have not even been created yet. 75% of the students that need to have access to the middle class will need to have some sort of post-secondary training. Now, that doesn't mean they have to go to college, but it means a work credential, technical skill, maybe an entrepreneurial experience, or being an apprentice. But we talk about, we want all of our Piper graduates to have access to the middle class. We want them to be independent, and we want them to be able to provide that generational wealth that all students and families need to have. So from there, we leaned into what Kansas has as the work-based learning continuum. They have three phases that you can see there, career awareness, career exploration, and career preparation. So we took that and created what is our future-ready plan in Piper. We talk about inspire, ignite, and immerse. And so at the elementary level, you can see what that means. We're inspiring students. So we're starting to talk about career awareness, even with our three-year-olds, our three-year-olds, our four-year-olds, our kindergarten students. So we take field trips, we bring in classroom speakers, we bring in touch-a-truck, we create a high-wage, high-demand community event, and we bring in business partners for our future-ready products. At the middle school level, we title that Ignite. And there, we begin the individual plan of study that you heard Bonner Springs talk about. We have guest speakers and career days. We have junior achievement, BizTown. And if you haven't been there, that place is amazing. So go see that right here and wind up. So go see that right here in Wyandotte County. And we start talking about the CTE exploration career pathways. And then we have our academy preparation classes. All of our students go through a training with Startland called Design Thinking so that they understand how to think critically. And then at the high school, we have that career preparedness. And where we landed with our Kaufman grant was creating wall-to-wall academies. We have embedded our market value assets into those academies. And then we bring in a lot of industry partners, and we end this with a senior capstone. So what I want to talk about tonight are our academies. We're very proud of those. We're going to begin with the end in mind. And so what you see in front of you is where we landed with our academies that we offer. So how we're different and what wall-to-wall means to us is that our students don't have to apply to being in an academy. Every single student at the high school level is in an academy. So some districts have twenty-five, thirty-five percent of students that are going to an academy. Every single one of ours will be in an academy, and we start that work actually at the middle school level. So you see, we have an eighth-grade prep. We have six academies, design and production and aviation, business, entrepreneurship and innovation, arts and media, human services, health and life sciences, and public services. And what's really fun about these, and then there are sectors with each one of them, is that actually our students created. So as we started this work, we went to the CTE pathways. We created the sectors that we thought the kids would love. We handed it to them. We said, vote, tell us what you think. And we completely missed the mark. And so we took their feedback and actually, so our students at the high school helped create these academies. And so we're very, very proud of that. So on the next few pages, I have there for you what you can see in a little bit more in-depth, what those academies entail. So again, six academies, twenty-four different sectors. And then we have a required capstone, and some of you came and judged for our capstone. But our students do a presentation over their whole year, what they've done with the academy. But they also defend the portrait of a graduate, those competencies. Like a dissertation defense, they have to do the exact same thing. And that's part of what they have to do to graduate from high school. So the metrics, one hundred percent of our students completed a capstone project connected to an industry partner. We are so excited to share that all of the goal is by 2030, all of our kids will have a market value asset. This graduating class ended up with eighty-six point six percent. So we've traveled over forty-one percent in less than two years with our students. And we had approximately a hundred and seventy-five industry partners connected with our real-world learning experiences. They come in and do table chats, lunch and learns. They take our kids on field trips, take them into the business. And so we are so thankful for that. The next page, in this first year, we went from fifty-one concentrators to a hundred and fifty-eighth concentrators in the CTE pathway. And we had five students that were named CTE scholars. And so what that means is they'll either have articulated credit with KCK and other colleges as well, which can be very exciting for us. We have advisory boards that come in and tell our teachers, this is what it looks like when they leave you. And so that's really important for us to have that feedback. And then we now have an eighth-grade academy night where we bring our families in. I'm proud to say that one hundred percent of our elementary students participated in at least one future-ready project this year. And then we have a showcase, like we talked about, where we bring in high-demand, high-wage jobs for our students. So the next thing that's up for that is our middle school redesign, and we're working backwards in that process. Lastly, I have some pictures for you here. So right along with the fact that we're doing this work in the building, we know that the facility needs to match what that will look like for our students. So we are so grateful that our community in 2022 passed a bond. And we currently have an elementary school that is being turned into our high school. And so I have a few pictures for you here of what that is going to look like. But as you scroll through that, probably what is the most exciting are these two pages that you'll see here in that each of the wings of the high school will have an academy focus. And in the middle of those classrooms will be a lab with a glass window. And that's where all the hands-on learning will take place. So even as you start in ninth grade, you may not be doing as much of the hands-on work, but you will see, hey, this is what's going to happen in my academy. So we'll have a courtroom set up. I believe we're close to acquiring a fire truck that our students will get to have in that academy. So really exciting things, but we want that learning to be visible and that everything you see there is industry standard so that when our students leave and graduate, they are ready to get to their post-secondary dreams. So thank you for allowing us to be here tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Dane. And again, commissioners, I appreciate your time in allowing our educational community to increase your awareness of what they are doing for our childrens, for our families, and for our business community. It is truly remarkable. I have only the highest regard for the educational leaders that are before you this evening. It's, it's, it's an interesting thing. When I retired, for an example, in the Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools, there were fifty-eight languages. It's seventy-two now. And in less than a decade, how things are developing. The growth of some of the, that we're seeing within our, our school system is incredible. And yet, these systems are rising to the occasion in addressing the challenges, meeting the needs. And it's with a feeling of collaborative spirit because I know the high regard each one of these leaders, as for you as an elected body. And I'm sure that you share that respect with them. With that, Mayor, we conclude our presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Rios. We'll take a few minutes and just transition. I'm sure that our commissioners have a lot of questions, and we'll start with Commissioner Ramirez.
You hear me? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be very, very brief. I feel like I'm in Field Day. Most of you don't know, I work in special education at Horizon Academy in Rowan Park. I do multisensory math intervention. So I am very, very, very appreciative for all that you do. I am currently in school to get my licensure to teach. So I'm very excited for that. Ever since I was a kid, always wanted to be a teacher. So I want to thank you for all that you do for the students all throughout Wyandotte County. And education, more specifically, public education is a bedrock of every community. And so I'm a very firm believer of that. And I don't, I cannot, oh, sorry, I do not remember your name. But you mentioned the science of reading. Thank you, thank you, thank you. That is something that our star school at, where I work at, that is the, one of our big things that we're, we're heavy on. Majority of our students are, have been diagnosed with dyslexia. They go to our school because they've been diagnosed with dyslexia. We teach them. We have our approach. Don't know if you've heard of it, Orton-Gillingham. The Orton-Gillingham approach, that's our main literacy approach that we teach our students how to read. So thank you for that. I'm hoping, that's, our hope is that all schools across the district, across, across our country, adopt that approach of that science of reading. Because you're right, every student can read. You just have to give them the tools to do it. So I just thank you for all that you do. It, it, it means a lot, especially in the climate of, of how our public education is going and the attack on public education. I want to thank you for what you do, and thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to all of you all for coming. Only been asking this for about eight years now. And so I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm amazed and I'm thankful. Mayor, thank you again. Thank you, Mr. Rios, for doing the legwork. Got a lot of stuff that we need to read through here tonight. One of the things that I've always been curious about, if, if there were ways that we could figure out to realize economies of scale as relates to, you know, our, our individual bottom line to kind of all can work collaboratively as it relates to tax policy and how we, you know, what each of your respective interests are that, that lie before you. School district or the community colleges, we already know they're building another facility here. I'm loving it. It's going to be in the fourth district, by the way, for everyone to know that. But if there were ways that we could figure out to come together and talk about the things that are important, maybe a three-year, five-year outlook. And as relates to how we carve out tax policy to our constituents, one of the things we say around the table is, we represent, for every dollar that is paid by our constituents, we represent about forty-six cents of that one dollar. And so that's, that's the piece that we do, and then you all have your respective places as well. And I just, I've always thought if we could come together and talk about, how can we manage that one dollar that is being charged to every single person, ourselves included? I think that would help us overall as a city because we know that we're an urban community. You know, and sometimes we have more needs than we have money. All of us can say that. But if we could work together in terms of how do we cobble together a, an overall policy that will guide us, not to saying that if we lower, will you lower, not, not that kind of dialogue. But if we understand where each party is coming from, I think that will help us to, to address the needs of the constituents. I don't know how much you all hear from, from your taxpayers in your respective areas, but we're constantly bombarded about needing to lower taxes, need to lower taxes, you need to lower taxes. And so we find ourselves sometimes in a conundrum because we want to oblige that. But at the same time, we have an increasing amount of needs. And so it's just something for a future conversation, Mayor. But I think it would be good if we could at least put that at the top of the list for future conversations. I would greatly appreciate it. So thank you all for this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Bynum.
Thank you, Mayor. Melissa Bynum at Large District One. First, I want to say very sincerely to each and every one of you and every member of your staffs, thank you, because unlike Commissioner Ramirez, I knew from when my daughter was at a very young age that I absolutely could not be an educator. And so I, I, because of that awareness, I try really hard to always thank educators because I have watched the amazing things that they have done in my life and my children's lives. I want to also take the opportunity to say how grateful and thankful I am as to how each and every one of you and your staffs came together during the pandemic. You went above and beyond any conceivable measure to take care of your students and their families. What our community did during that pandemic was absolutely remarkable. And so I want to make sure you know that you have our gratitude. I want to shout out to Edwin Birch. We love you and miss you. And USD 500 is super lucky to have you. And I just want to say to you all and the mayor that it would be wonderful to have you come back soon so that we can dialogue. Thank you.
Ms. Sharon Davis.
I'll be quick. I'll echo everything that my colleague over here said far more elegantly than I would have. But thank you all. This is probably the first time, probably in history, that this has really happened, where we all have gotten in a room and people that are watching this particular meeting are seeing all of these institutions that are so critical, right, to the public investment. And so I would love for us to have a conversation about tax policy. But beyond that, how we can continue to partner. I would love to have you all come every year so that we can understand what's going on in your world and you all can understand what's going on in ours. We have to break down the silos and kudos to you, Mayor, and Mr. Rios for breaking down those silos so that we can have those conversations. Thank you all for, for coming. And yeah, I hope we can do this again. Thank you.
Richard Steitz.
Steitz, District Seven. Well, it's always tough to go last because you feel like everything's already been said, right? But I don't know who, who that we should thank. If it's JD or the mayor, but whoever organized this, got this together. You guys heard that we, we've been asking and that we want to have these type of partnerships brought in the same room. And finally, we're here, right, from everybody across the entire county, including Bonner Springs. And we liked that. We like that a lot. I will say, I'm pretty proud that Bonner District 204, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, lowered their middle levy six last year. But we'll talk about taxes again. No, but thanks, thank you each and every one of you all for coming tonight. And feel free to stay and watch our commission meeting this evening. And just always remember, we're here to support you guys and be brave.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Chalston.
Well, you're not the last, Commissioner Chris Steitz. But thank you as always in order. This was a real eye-opener. I had not met some of you before. It makes me consider, maybe want to go back to grade school in Turner. I know I've talked to Commissioner Mark. It was really interesting what's being done. Thank you, Dr. Stubblefield, for hearing what we need to do in terms of getting people in the pipeline to the pool and what has developed from that that will enable us to have young people waiting, being trained to occupy those seats at Parkwood Pool and any other pool that we may develop later. That is so essential. So thanks to all of you as educators for what you're doing in innovative ways. And thanks to the mayor and Mr. Rios for pulling this together. And yes, we do miss you, Edwin. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kane.
I guess we really did say the best for last. You know what? We, we've been asking this for a long time. We, we really appreciate what you're doing. But we do want you back because we're only X amount of dollars. You guys are the other side of the fifty cents, you know, or whatever it is, the dollar bill. And just thank you for what you're doing for our kids. And I got six grandkids in Piper. And when we moved out there, there were only seven hundred kids in the entire system. So that's awesome that the growth's out there. And I don't know how you're handling Kansas City, Kansas with all those kids. God bless for the work that you do.
Thank you, Commissioners. Well, I think, I know we always say, oh, well, you know, who takes the credit? I think we all take the credit because this is something that was asked for, that's needed. And even by some of our superintendents that are here today, they, they didn't hesitate to come to the table because they wanted to present and show not just this commission and, and our administration and staff, the great work that they're doing in Wyandotte County. But they wanted this to be on record for our community. Anybody that puts insight and sound over these presentations, hopefully, you will know, not just in Wyandotte County, but anybody that's thinking about moving here. Yes, Wyandotte County, if you had any doubt, has some of the best schools you'll find in anywhere with some of the best kids that are achieving and succeeding and excelling in ways that people have often doubted. And so when you talk about moving to communities and wanting to find a place to call home, people always look at schools. We've got good schools. And we've got four school districts that are now collaborating and talking and working, collaborating together. We have a junior college that is expanding and enhancing its educational opportunities, especially those areas that have been disinvested and disenfranchised, where those resources of educational opportunities are needed the most. And we have a four-year institution. And you've got these top educational executives in Wyandotte County around the table with us, trying to find real solutions to improve the educational opportunities so people can raise not just their quality of life, but raise their income levels to hopefully create generational wealth and create a community where everyone has a job and can live in a safe, clean environment and be part of a great community that we all call Wyandotte County. So every four corner of this community is here tonight. So anybody think about moving to Wyandotte County? So anybody think about moving to Wyandotte County? All four corners of our community are representing as far as educational opportunities. The first step to hope, the second step to opportunity, and the third step to an improved destiny starts with an education. I thank you all for being here tonight. Appreciate you. And yes, I know that you all will be back again and probably more than you could imagine. Yes, with this conversation. So thank you so much for the opportunity, and thank you, JD.
I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Dave's second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Clerk, roll call, please.
Roll call, Johnson.
Hi.
Kane.
Hi.
Merkley.
Hi.
Stikes.
Hi.
Davis.
Hi.
Bynum.
Hi.
Townsend.
Hi.
Ramirez.
Hi.
We are adjourned.
Because of the lateness of the hour, we will try and reconvene. Staff does have to do some technical work. So we were looking, we are gonna look at seven forty-five, and I apologize on the lateness, but hopefully, we will get out tonight early because we do have a short agenda.